Self-serving club.
Yeah, it was.
Called this regular workshop meeting to order. You have a cockpit proposed agenda for tonight's meeting and I entertain a motion to adopt.
You have it.
That's the one that's amended with the consent items, Mr. Ray.
Okay, we'll follow with the consent agenda, yes.
Okay. So we do have two consent items and we have one set of minutes from March 4th, 2020, regular workshop.
That's my motion.
Okay. Discussion here done all in favor, say goodbye, I say aye.
And Mayor, let me take a moment to explain to the viewing audience of what we're doing. Although we call these workshops, these are actually regular council meetings. This evening, we had anticipated having a council meeting at 7:00, but the primary issue on that agenda was the swearing-in of two battalion chiefs. Their family members are elderly and they both asked that we not swear them in or have their parents come. So therefore, we're combining the 7:00 meeting, which will now not occur, with this meeting at 5:00. So all of these items, Mr. Attorney, all of these items can be legally handled in this session.
Yes, sir. The court, as I just took my motion, there was an approval of the agenda and adoption, approval of the minutes and the adoption of the consent items. Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay.
Anything else, sir?
He answered your question.
Yes, sir. I would also like for you to know that the city attorney is wearing his St. Patrick's Day tie today.
Yes, he is. The city manager is too.
By kissing the blaring stone, you'll understand.
Exactly.
I thought I was ready, but you canceled the regular meeting.
What is your desire there?
It's St. Patrick's Day with its shamrocks.
There you go. Man with the fancy ties.
Public services director is also kind of green in there.
My energy's thoughts, though. I don't have the shamrocks. They don't say it was, you'd get pinched if you didn't wear it.
Yes, sir. That's what I thought of this morning.
Mayor and Council, this evening, we come to talk with you about several items on the workshop portion. One will be the recreation program and temporary agency employees. Susan will assist me as we go through this. This is actually part of your effort every year to look at your analysis on employees relative to wage adjustment. As you'll see in this presentation, we have primarily focused this portion on the recreation part-time employees. In the past, we have dealt with issues on police and fire. Most recently, at the last meeting, you addressed the issue of telecommunications and we made some adjustments. The recreation budget is about $3.3 million. We spend a lot of money every year on recreation. As you'll see in a few minutes, a significant amount of that goes to hire temporary employees. On the right, you will see that we have 18, I'm sorry, 19 full-time benefited employees, two part-time benefited, six part-time reduced benefited, which basically means they're in the North Carolina retirement system, and we have 15 part-time non-benefited. Now, all of those people, the city actually hires. Historically, to run most of our programs, we have gone through the temp agencies. We don't have 125 positions, but what we find is that going through the need because of turnover at the temporary agencies, we usually go through about 125 people a year. That's a lot of turnover.
A lot of training.
A lot of training. The current money that we spend, that you allocate, is $377,000 that we spend with the temp agencies. As you know, a temp agency charges us, let's just say that they charge $10, they keep 32% of that, and correctly so. They have interviews, they have drug testing, they have FICA and things they have to pay, and then they also have their profit margin. What that means is that many of our part-time employees that come from the temp agencies are only making $6.5 to $8.5. As you'll see in a minute, that's difficulty in this job market. It requires or results in a lot of turnover. We use the temp agency employees for both seasonal and long-term positions. And in the research, I find that we do have some temporary positions and employees who've literally held that position for seven, eight years, but we consider them to be temporary employees. As you know, Susan runs a very exhaustive program. Some of you are involved in the adult services. None of you are old enough to be in the senior adult services, so we eliminated that title. Community services, which you'll see in a minute, athletic services, obviously what the title is, and then citywide services, which we'll explain. Before and after-school programs, we have 10 programs. So when you see program 10, that's the number of programs. We have 14 city employees and 15 or more temporary employees. Now, why is it more? We have a ratio of students to supervisory people. So if our house count of students is at a certain level, we match it. If that goes up, we increase the number of people we hire. Because Susan's program has a ratio that we do not vary from. Now, we will vary just a little bit. So instead of one for 16, we have one for 17, that's one thing. But we don't go from one supervisor to 32. That's just not the way that we need to operate. Summer day camps, we have six programs. You can see the staffing. Athletic programs, all ages, we have 12 and 29. Now, these are the categories where we really have a lot of turnover. We have some people who stay with us a long time. We have other people who are $8 an hour, as soon as they find a job at one of the restaurants or wherever, they're gone. The special and citywide programs are primarily our summer and special events. And one of the things that we'll be asking you to think seriously about as we look at the budget is whether we are going to continue the swim program. Now, I'm not going to chase that rabbit tonight. I'm just going to tell you that that's one of those policy issues that you're going to be addressing in a tight budget. The challenges that we face are recruitment. The current job market is very tight. What we also know is that in order to come to work with the city, you have to pass tests that you may not have to pass for other people. And so that narrows the job market even further. Retention, loyalty is difficult when bulk of the workforce are temporary employees. And then stability, every time we have turnover, that means we have to retrain people and there's a lack of continuity. The issues that I face as a manager are really listed here. What I have found in the analysis, and I do want to give the HR department and recreation a pat on the back, they have spent literally months analyzing this. And what we have found is that many of our programs are run by non-city people. I'm talking about totally. We have turnover in positions. We have, as you see, money being collected by non-city employees. And of course, we have the liability issue. Because, you know, at the end of the day, yes, we can fire them. All we have to do is pick up the phone, call the temp agency and say, "Don't bring Joe Blow back." But you have more control over employees when you're the one signing the paycheck. And you have more control over employees when you give them a pay that encourages them to stay with you. Because then you will be sure that they are not going to do things that they shouldn't From a staffing standpoint, what we are asking is to literally shift all of the people that we hire from the temp agency over to being hired through HR. You'll recall that last summer, we asked you to authorize us to do this with department staff. The data at that time showed that in a 13-week period, Michael went through on temp agencies, he went through over 60 people to constantly fill his 17 or 18 mowing positions. This year, we moved those in-house, we hired them, we paid them better money, and guess what? Every person we hired stayed with us the entire summer mowing, except those who had to leave early to go off to college. We had no turnover. Now, did that program cost us more? Actually, in Michael's case, almost no more. Why? Because the 32% that we were paying the temp agency, we increased the salary, not completely 32%, but we increased the salary that we were paying. So instead of being out there mowing and weed eating for $8.25, those people were getting $10.25 or $10.50, and they stayed with us the whole summer. To implement this program is going to cost you $55,000. And we'll show you in a minute by division how that goes. What you're doing is transferring the 337,000 or 377,000, whichever it was on the previous screen, you're taking that away from the temp agency, fully transferring it to a pool, not to Susan's budget, but to a pool that Gail will manage and HR will hire the people. The 55,000 will actually come from the 300,000 that you have budgeted for wage equity. And obviously, it then gets built into next year's budget.
So, Richard, just before you move on, so is it the 370 plus the 50?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. To fully implement this.
To fully implement.
For round numbers, I say it's going to cost you $425,000. Mr. Thomas can tell you the exact number. And of course, Gail doesn't let me do, but math in public, that was close. Here's what we'd actually do. In adult services, what we would be doing, the current budget is $22,500. We currently use two temps. These are people, as you can see, $22,500 divided by two, that's not that much money. To implement this, and this is all part of the 55,000, $8,500. Due to attrition, we currently hire in before and after-school 20 to 25 temp agency employees. To put all of the before and after-school programs in our employment, you will have to add $26,000 and change. When you look at athletic services, you need to add $31,000. When you look at the summer programs, there's actually a savings. I'm not sure I can explain to you how we save that money, but according to the math, we do. So you'd save $6,000. And in the area for community services relative to facility rentals, you'd save $800. At the end of the day, and at the end of the day, this is one that we are going to talk to you about. Do you want to keep this program next year? But that's a budget thing. But assuming that you did keep it, it would cost $3,700 in savings. That's because although we're increasing the pay, we're not having all of the other expenses. Bottom line is the benefits of the transition to the city. They become city employees, reduce liability, the potential for revenue increase with adequate staffing. Now, what does that mean? If we have stable staffing, we have a waiting list for a number of our programs. And remember, your before and after-school program is set up on the basis that they are to be self-funded. They are not to cover indirect costs like the building, the electricity, but they are supposed to cover all of the staffing charges. So if, for example, we can add another 16 students because of waiting lists and you can hire someone, our problem is if you can't keep people, you can't expand the number of people you're serving. And of course, retention, dependability, and then quality.
So, Richard, the programs that you're running down, do they offset themselves?
Not all of these programs. The vast majority of our programs, like balls and bats programs, they do not offset. There is a fee.
But those revenues don't offset the expenditures to run those actual programs?
Let's go through it. Before and after-school program, our goal is to have the fees that offset the expense. All of the other programs are there, the fee does not offset. They're subsidized by the general fund. So in summary, in order to implement this, you're increasing by $55,000 in the next year's budget. Now, here's one other thing that I want to make sure you understand. These people will remain as temporary employees. If you give, for example, a 2% pay increase to the general employee, it does not impact these people. These people are not in your pay plan. They are in a separate plan that has to do with part-time work. So let's just say, for discussion purposes, that a person in the summer programs has paid $12. I know one of the concerns that you always have on employees is once a person gets hired, the next year it goes up, the next year it goes up, the next year it goes up. These positions are positions that are going to be at that pay unless you come along at a later date and say, "We're going to increase that pay also." But I want to make it very clear that these positions we're talking about will not be impacted by cost of living increases you give unless you specifically approve them having that increase.
Even though they're city employees?
That's correct. And the reason why is because the bulk of these people, well, all of these people are part-time. The bulk of these people are non-benefited. The only place that you really get into benefited is where you pass a certain number of hours.
Thousand hours? Thousand hours?
A thousand hours, and then you have to pay the state retirement system. These people will not be on your health insurance program. They don't have any other benefits unless they pass the thousand hours, and that's what by law we require to.
Work is competent as an expense, though.
Yes, I mean.
Standard expenses.
You can't shift away from that.
Yeah, but that's not considered, that's not considered in our benefit package.
I understand.
That's the liability. But you're right, Mr. Bidner, from your years in sitting in this chair, every person that you put out there, you have the workers' comp liability issue.
How about unemployment? If they're six months a year, can they get laid? I mean, can't they just, can they apply for unemployment? You get that?
Yes.
We said we're going to incur an additional.
Those are standard employment benefits you have to.
But I'm saying, will they, they'll be eligible to collect unemployment when we lay them off from their temporary position?
Gail has to meet. I'm not positive, but I believe at least the ones we hire in the temp pool, we have them sign something that says, "You work from April to September, and you understand that that's the end of your employment," and I don't think that I.
Yeah, that's, you know, you're exactly correct. If a person, let's take the lifeguards, for example. They're hired for 13 weeks. They sign a contract that they understand this is contract work from, you know, May 28th to wherever 13 weeks is. At the end of that, they do not qualify for unemployment because they signed a specific contract for a specific time. On the other hand, let's talk about before and after-school programs. Let's say a person signs up for that, and halfway through the year, we decide to close the before and after-school program. Then, yes, they could qualify for unemployment.
Could you elaborate more on the increase? I'm kind of not following that. If we're saving the 32% that you're paying the temp agency, where is the rest of it? Where's the augmentation going in?
The rest of it goes to pay a salary that we believe will be sufficient to actually attract people on a full-time basis.
So you're raising the rate?
Yep. We're raising, not every rate, but some of the key rates. You know, if they're making $9.50 today, they're going to be making $12.5 to $13, because those are positions that we need to keep. So that's where the bulk of the 55,000 will go, will actually be better pay.
So should we implement this? Will we be through with the temp people forever?
We'll be through with, we will be completely finished with temp people. All of our part-time temporary employees will come through the city.
Except for Jim Weiler?
Well, I'm sorry. There is one, and I won't mention his name, Susan just did, but I won't mention on the record. In the law, you cannot have a city employee doing two different jobs and pay them two different salaries. We have one long-term person who does a stormwater function.
Okay.
And then also drives a bus for us.
Right.
Well, in that case, that person will still be hired through the temp agency because he does a great job, but we can't hire him for one and hire him from the temp agency for the other. We have to hire him through the temp agency for both. Now, other than that, all of Pat Donovan Potts' summer people, we're already hiring. All of the Park summer people, we're already hiring. And there's one other Ron, where's the other?
Streets, we have.
Streets, for mosquito control.
So the strategy is to eliminate from the temp agency because of the amount of turnovers. And with a little added increase, you believe that you can fill those same positions on a more permanent basis.
With a, and with a higher quality individual.
Higher quality individual.
More qualified individual, perhaps.
If I could, a great example is I really just paid, for the most part, 7.25 minimum wage. Well, that 35% or 32% we're now able to actually put to their hourly rate. So I have my after-school people now at like the $10 rate. So we were able to take that difference and just apply it to their hourly rate, and that will make a tremendous difference to who applies and who we can keep and the turnover that we have. But right now, I'll be honest, the bulk of all of those folks are at minimum wage because we're paying an additional amount. So when we're able to take that additional amount and put it towards their hourly, it's going to be.
So is HR going to be here in a month asking for more help hiring all these people?
Yes, they will, but let me tell you how I'm handling that. There is a vacant position that's coming up, and that person will be transferred, instead of that position being filled, it's already in your budget, that position will be transferred to HR. We will not be asking for an increase to cover this in permanent positions. I'll tell you off the record who that person is that's going to be leaving.
John?
In reference to the liability issue, all independent contractors who come on our property have to have liability insurance and put this as an additional insurer. I presume, and this is a presumption, that the temporary agency has the same kind of insurance on their employee.
That's correct.
So again, if John Doe acts inappropriately, we don't want him back tomorrow. If he's been our employee for some period of time, we may very well have to go through the pre-termination and et cetera kind of hearing. We would also not have the benefit of the temp agency's liability insurance, it would fall if he's done something inappropriate, which we hope we don't ever have this, but we have to prepare for the unexpected. As we're sitting around here talking about virus right now, but never expected. But that our insurance company would have to pick up totally any kind of liability expense there. So I don't know on the liability, there's a handful here and there and so forth, so there's some considerations, and that's what I want to make.
Well, John has always said to me, "It doesn't matter what contractor has what insurance, when something goes bad, they're going to sue you."
Yes, sir. We're going to be at the bottom of that.
But that's our request. If you, now, let's talk about for this year. If you approve this and we move forward, for the rest of this year, it's about $15,000. And that comes from the 300,000 equity. In next year's budget, it would be $55,000.
Well, I think this is a good example of what we normally preach in terms of efficiency, effectiveness in the economy. We're getting a better bang for our buck even at a nominal cost. Better programming, morale, quality of work.
I'd just like to say that, you know, we employ really good people, and they're fantastic to work with. It's a shame that we tend to lose them for multiple reasons. So I really feel like, you know, overall, we're going to be able to provide a much better employee that has a lot of opportunities and provide a better program. But we have some great people that work for us from the temp agency, you know, and it's just kind of a challenge at times to say, "We value you, we appreciate you, go to your temp agency and pick up your check." So I really think this will go a really long way with, again, that retention and the value of the person that we can get and maintain. So thank you.
I support.
Are we going in the right direction here, Council? Everybody agree?
None of us, none of us like to hear that it's going to cost 55,000, you know, that's tough. But on the other hand, what kind of cost do we have in not, you know, in having to retrain and retrain and retrain? I mean, that's, I think, you know, the Michael Licori's example of his folks, I mean, you know, there's quite a bit of training to make sure somebody's safely operating, there's cutting equipment, mowing equipment, what to do, how to do it, where they need to be, how, what the expectations are. If you have to continually do that, it takes up a lot of management time. It eats it up.
I'm sure that's true of all the other positions, too.
And if we can, if we can eliminate that, yes, it's an extra cost, and I hate that. But on the other hand, it may, it may actually be a savings of, it may be hard to define, but it's certainly a real cost out there when you have to retrain. And go for a period of time without somebody. You know, the temp agencies don't normally, can't normally throw another body at you. That's really all you're doing, just getting more bodies. I've been there from, you know, from the construction side. We've used them. Our thought was that we'd save money from the liability standpoint, that we could, you know, their workman's comp would cover them. We wouldn't have that on our workman's comp. As John said, the liability on the, you know, inappropriate behavior, that's on them. But really and truly, you're, it just doesn't work out because of the quality of people that you get quite often through those temp agencies. It's just a, you get them for a day or two, and they find out that you got a sweat in the job, and they don't want to come back the next day. So I'm for it, even though I hate the extra cost.
Well, we appreciate, we appreciate that. Our pledge to you is the pledge we give every time you approve something like this. We will implement it, we will be efficient, and we'll make sure it benefits the taxpayer and the ratepayers. So thank you very much.
That's great. Thank you.
Parkwood Sewer Project, the man in the green tie?
You're wearing a green tie also.
It's the other. Jason, do you want to come up and join us also, please? Bring up another.
I want to bring Gail.
Gail?
Right here. I'm going to make eye contact with you.
That's in case I say something that's not exactly right. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Appreciate you giving us this opportunity. We're actually going to talk about the Parkwood project, and also in this presentation, we'll cover the water into a rate model because it kind of feeds into this discussion. So with that, just a quick overview, you've seen this slide before. City really has two major components to our wastewater system. Our collection system, which the bulk of our wastewater is collected and transmitted to the main pump station and then pumped through a 36-inch force main, seven miles out of town, to land treatment site. And then we do, kind of over in the right-hand corner of the screen, we do have the Piney Green service area that goes to the Marine Corps Base Camp Lejeune. Real quickly, our treatment capacity is permitted is 10 million gallons a day, nine at the land treatment site. Of course, you're aware of some of the challenges we have during long periods of wet weather and rain and storms like Hurricane Florence. But ultimately, we have 9 million gallons of permitted capacity at land treatment site, and then 1 million gallons through an agreement with, on Wassa, who has an agreement with the base. And then our average daily flow is 5.4 million to land treatment. And then right now, the only thing that goes to Piney Green or down Piney Green is Highland Forests, crossing the Food Lion, Bojangles. And I think that number's a little bit low. I think it's actually closer to 7,000, but it's still low. We have in our system 230 miles of gravity sewers. We have 46 wastewater pump stations, and then we have 42 miles of force main, and that's what. main, and that's what transmits all this sewer in the city. Just to give you a reminder of some of the things we've kind of talked to you before about, we started a master planning effort in two thousand and six that was called the Wastewater System Master Plan, and we updated that in two thousand and eleven. We did a, um, Piney Green Service Area Study that extended from Poplar Branch, um, it was part of Patriot Park, all the way up to Seventeen North, and I'll show you that in just a moment. And then we have a full wastewater system model that we can update and run scenarios, or we could before Alvin left. So now, we own the model, we, the last time, he updated it for us just after he left, uh, but that's something that we do have people on staff, and we are, we will be getting them trained up for. But we do own that model. We, we have eight major basins in the city. These are all of our major lift stations. Uh, the four you see on the left are kind of our, our lower growth, you know, that area's predominantly built out, you know, you're talking the, the Bryn Mawr area, Ellis, or there's some vacant land in the industrial park, um, and then the main pump station in Branson Creek, which is in the Georgetown area. Our higher-growth basins are the Poplar Branch, Henderson, Brookview, and then the Southwest Basin. And tonight, I'm gonna talk about the Poplar Branch, Henderson, and Brookview. Uh, so we'll jump right into the Poplar Branch. This is, um, a request, uh, to include, I think, from Mr. Thomas at one of our previous meetings. Uh, this project was done under an agreement with Onwasa. If you recall, uh, NCDOT was looking at widening Piney Green Road, and we realized that if we were ever gonna construct infrastructure in that area, we really needed to do it in advance or as part of that road widening project. So with that, Onwasa and the city went together. We have one point two million gallons, um, at a pump station called Poplar Branch Pump Station, and through an agreement with Onwasa to the Rain Corp Base Camp Lejeune's wastewater treatment plant. Of that one million gallons is for the city, for undeveloped, uh, properties, and then two hundred thousand is for Onwasa through the city system to serve existing development. Examples of that could be areas like, uh, I think it's Aragona Village that's off of Hemlock, and, um, the Regal Wood is in that area. So there is some developed land that could come through the city system if Onwasa ever needed to go in and serve those developments. The agreement basically said that engineering would be a fifty percent split between us and Onwasa, that the direct construction that could be attributed to any system would be paid, paid for by that system. So the pump station, the gravity sewer, the force main associated with Poplar Branch was a hundred percent responsibility of the city. And then the portions of the lower system, which is a, a force main, pump station, gravity sewer, that was Onwasa, was a hundred percent of their cost. And then any indirect costs such as mobilization or, or anything like that was split fifty percent. And then there is, in the agreement, an availability charge that the city pays to Onwasa, and then we have to pay for the, the daily service.
Question about the availability charge. Is that the difference between what, what we're holding and what we're, and, and what we're currently sending? Will that, will that charge go down as we send more sewer through it?
I'll get there.
Okay.
So the Piney Green Sewer Project, the city's portion consisted of the lift station, gravity sewer, kind of that blue area that you see. Um, the gravity sewer is in green, um, and then this is actually Poplar Branch, and then this is the force main that goes to Onwasa's system. The construction costs associated with, with this project, including engineering, design, right-of-way, uh, construction and, and construction administration, were three point two million dollars. The ongoing annual operational cost, and this gets to your question, we do have an availability charge is paid twice a year. The total annual charge is two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars. Our service charge is paid monthly. The availability charge is there to cover the portion of Onwasa's bond payments that are due each year for the city's part of the system. As we make payments, there is a reduction in the payment schedule. So you don't pay that principal twice, but it's not necessarily discounted on the availability charge.
So there's, so there's a time limit on, on that availability charge?
Correct.
To coincide with the bond?
That is correct. And then, uh, of course, as you're paying for that total bond payment, if, if our, if we use the full million dollars, the break would be equivalent to that bond payment. I'm sorry, a million gallons, the full million gallons through the station. So you're not paying on that portion that the bond char, the, the availability charge covers. So the availability charge is really there because Onwasa recognized they were gonna have bond payments even before we filled up all of our sewer.
It was they paid ten million dollars to get it from the twenty-four to the processing. They went through the base. They had to spend ten million dollars for their pipe to get it from highway twenty-four to the base. So they're, they've allocated, they've allocated whatever portion to, to us, so yeah, we're paying a quarter million dollars for six thousand gallons of sewer processing.
Yeah. How long, how long, how much longer we got on that payment?
I can't answer that. I can get that information.
I would estimate though about thirteen years, because, you know, most of these bonds, none of us do bonds more than twenty years now. We'll get the actual number, but I would estimate that that pipe was put in, in the thirteen, two thousand thirteen, fourteen era, so we're probably six or seven years into it. So I would project we have about thirteen more years, but we'll verify that.
I think our, our, I will say, I guess, call it the issue, or whatever, of this was, we went into this when John Cuddick was alive, and he had annexed Patriot Park, and we were looking at a potential of, it was three hundred plus, uh, units that were gonna be in the city that we were gonna need service for, and when you took your avail, you know, when you multiplied your service fee, what we call now?
System development.
System development.
Time that.
Then this was a, this worked out on the napkin, but since things changed so radically after that, that nothing's happened there, we're stuck with this expense, and we can call it an investment with a future, but it's a, it's an expense right now that's on the rest of our ratepayers that are paying a lot of money for not much at this point.
There might be some light at the end of the tunnel, though I want to understand there's some interest in selling that property and developing it.
Well, that's always a possibility, I guess, but then I wonder, too, about the real benefit.
Maybe more so, more so than years, years ago with the housing crash.
Right. But it hasn't really crashed here. That's another issue, is this crashed for us, but it hasn't crashed in the county, you know, so that's, that's our, that's our dilemma.
And the thing that we're not considering, too, one of the main strategies that we had in doing this was diverting Bryn Mawr.
That's true.
I mean, that, that was always part of the conversation. Now we're finding that it's not feasible to do that. We didn't know that back then. You could look at all the records from all our conversations, that was never brought up during those conversations. It was, this was always a strategic move to divert Bryn Mawr to Piney Green to alleviate. And Jerry, you're a big part of it.
And to free up.
And to free up capacity for that, for the plant, and, you know, to have that total diversion. Um, that was always part of the conversation, when we took that on.
Well, there are some advantages to this project. As you said, they are future, but as part of the Piney Green Service Area Study that we put together, uh, the blue portion down in the bottom area is the Patriot Park development that you referred to. But what we also looked at is what could the overall larger basin, now admittedly, it would take some upgrades, but what could the overall larger basin look like that this pump station could serve? And that basin, because of the drainage features, you know, typically we follow drainage features, features, goes all the way up across Seventeen to the Drummer Kellam Road area. So there is a large, um, basin area that this project could serve. Now admittedly, it does take future improvements, and many of those we're looking at as part of that Patriot Park subdivision. So the early growth potential is obviously Patriot Park, but the overall larger service area for this basin is closer to one point nine million gallons per day. Again, that's.
And, and we would have the.
Way out.
We would have the inside track on, on this, provided this sewer service, not, not on Wassa.
That's correct, because there is no other sewer other than private in this area.
So potential city, city limits, city annexations.
That's correct. And when we, we also looked at this, you remember, uh, part of the Track Ten discussion with Hoffman Forest? Now, it would take another lift station, but we could potentially serve a portion of that track through this development also. So there are other opportunities that exist because of the Poplar Branch pump station. Any other questions before I move forward over to Western Regional? All right. Uh, the two basins I wanna talk about next are the Western, the Henderson and Brookview basins that could potentially be served by the Western Regional Project. Um, you've seen this slide before also, but the, the purpose of this slide is really to demonstrate a development that is out there. Uh, the white purple shows developed track, the little bit darker parcels that you see inside that purple area show undeveloped parcels that are readily, are readily served by our sewer. Notably, one of the things that, um, we had identified, and this is where our crystal ball unfortunately is not great, is the Gateway Marketplace Shopping Center. You know, we kind of had identified that for the city parcel next door, but that flipped over and went on to the area we identified for future, um, next door. But the total build-out for this, for the Henderson basin, and just the identified areas that you see there, is roughly seven hundred thousand gallons per day. For Brookview, we're closer to one point one million gallons per day. And you can see that, again, the pink color is the undeveloped, um, parcels that are inside of that Brookview basin that could be, uh, pretty easily served from our existing system, and then we did identify future areas that would likely tie into that system. Most notably are these three tracks, um, starting at the top right, right there off of Ramsey Road. We've been talking with the developer and his representative about a, um, development that's a hundred and twenty-eight lots, that would come into our system, um, through Carolina Forest, which goes to the Henderson basin, and, uh, that developer's actually submitted a petition for annexation to the city clerk that will be in front of you at a future meeting. Um, across the street from that is sixty-eight lots that would also be served, um, through the Henderson basin into Carolina, at the Carolina Forest area, through a pump station. And then the, I know everybody's familiar with the large track at the corner of Gum Ranch and, and generally Western Boulevard, and, um, the, a local engineer is working on that development, and right now, they're planning roughly five hundred homes and thirty-six acres of commercial. Obviously, uh, the five hundred homes wouldn't be built out all in one phase. They're telling us that the first phase that they're looking at is roughly two hundred homes. Um, and they are currently working on that, and that property is in city limits. So, one of the things that we thought would be good to talk to you about is, you know, while we are providing for growth, what are some of the missed opportunities if we don't move forward? So with that, I think everybody remembers the special order by consent that we were under from two thousand and five to two thousand and ten. It was actually supposed to extend to two thousand and eleven. We got out a year early because we worked so hard at land application to get that expanded. But over that timeframe, we had three hundred thousand gallons of sewer that we could designate out for development. That was if we met certain milestones, so we couldn't give it out all at one time. It was spread out over that five-year period. And then there was a provision written into that consent order that if we went in and did inflow and infiltration improvements, or INI improvements in our system, we could recover up to an additional four hundred thousand gallons, and we did do that. But unfortunately, one of the opportunities we missed was the Carolina Plantation subdivision. Actually approached the city about coming in, but we were not able to provide the sewer, um, that was necessary for that development. So they moved forward, they constructed their own plan, and the total tax market value that we pulled off tax records is just over, under a hundred and eighty million dollars. That's the tax value. What does that mean for us? The estimated annual revenue based on the number of single-family homes, multifamily homes, and then the commercial development that is out there, property tax value would be roughly one point one million dollars to the city. Um, it would increase our portion of sales tax to roughly four hundred thousand dollars. Using the base rate, so not any of the volumetric figures or anything, so if everybody just used their minimum two thousand gallons per month, and they paid the base rate, uh, one or two revenue would be, um, just over six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. The stormwater fees that we would collect on that area would be roughly sixty thousand dollars, and then we would also get additional power bill funds. Now admittedly, that infrastructure would have been the city's to maintain, so there's costs there, but the estimated annual revenue to the Carolina Plantation Project is roughly two point three million dollars. So there is some missed opportunity there. So, to see the areas that we've identified actually develop out, um, our model has looked at, um, what the, what we would need to do inside of our system. And the two things that I really want you to pay attention to the most is this line, which goes to Brookview, and then this line that goes to Henderson. Those are really, are limiting factors. Now, there's limitations, obviously, you can see that, um, Henderson, which is at the bottom of this, this last I drew, is bright red, because obviously we'd have to do upgrades at that station as well. But the real limitations are in those existing lines, those existing gravity sewers. This is what the, uh, model run looks like for the Western Trunk Sewer, so we broke Western Trunk Sewer into two phases. The first phase, uh, is a new regional lift station set between, generally between Williamsburg Plantation and North Woods, with a force main that runs directly to land app, so we would be able to turn sewer away from our existing system and send it over, so there is some benefit there, um, with having, you know, two force mains running out to the land application site. And then the first phase would extend, extend all the way up to Carolina Forest, and we would be able to redirect Carolina Forest pump station off of the Henderson basin and turn it through this project. And then you'll notice there's a, a small portion to the side that's Phase Two, and that's a new pump station that would be set generally at the location of Gateway North and Western Boulevard. So the service area would look something like this. With Phase One and Phase Two of that project, it would allow us to serve, um, roughly from the New River almost all the way down to, um, Rain Boulevard. The, the reason that this bottom corner where the Walmart and everything is not included is because that drains to a pump station that goes parallel to Seventeen and comes in. It would be possible to pick that up also, but it would take a redirection of an existing force main. But you can see that, um, this project is a major relief for both the Henderson and the Brookview station. And it takes all of the existing development that you see there and redirects it. So we have, once we finish the project, we have a baseline flow that goes directly to land application site. And we have immediate relief from some of our existing system. The projects that would go away if we moved forward with the Western Regional are those that are kind of shaded. You can see, again, it's largely associated with those two major lines that I talked about. And then the upgrades at the pump station itself, at the Henderson pump station itself. This is what the project looks like. If you recall, reported to you before, the project is designed. We have all of the necessary permits to move forward with construction. And we have all the necessary easements to move forward with construction. The project would be broken up into roughly five contracts. That's what these estimates look like. Notably, these.
Phase one only.
Phase one only, yes, sir. These estimates were done by the engineer, Kenley Horn. Admittedly, they were done in two thousand seventeen. I resurrected this slide from a previous presentation. We have not had them run an updated opinion of cost yet. The construction schedule, I think the most important thing here is that even if we went to construction today, that project would not be ready for almost three years. The project timeline is thirty-two and a half months. So there is a time schedule associated with this project. And that's bidding all of the contracts separately. So that you can actually, you'll see that they overlap versus having one contractor come in and trying to do the whole thing at one time. So this does help, that does help break the construction up to a point to where it's more manageable. It allows contractors that wouldn't normally be able to compete on such a large project be more competitive because they're building smaller portions. And what it does is it enables people that specialize in a certain type of work, such as laying pipe, to focus on that work and not necessarily building a pump station. So why now? Well, growth is coming from what we've shared with you. The local engineer that we've talked to is working on all three of those projects and working just as hard as he can. So he's told us that those submittals will be forthcoming very quickly. And as I mentioned, you know, one of those is already submitted. One of, the largest track is already in city limits. But the other track has submitted a petition for annexation. It's an opportunity to build our tax base. Bond rates are very favorable right now, as we're all aware with the market. NCDOT has delayed some of their projects. They are coming out of that period where, you know, they're going to start moving some of their projects forward. But, you know, as of right now, there's a lull in their construction. And then we're aware of the base military construction effort that will be moving forward. And if we were to move forward sooner, we don't have to compete with all their projects either. In addition, it enables our infrastructure to be ready for development. So we have less concerns with things like special orders by consent or future moratoriums. And it does enable the city to grow. So how would we pay for it? The Western Regional project is included in the existing rate model. It was also included the last several years in the rate model.
And by also assumption, then the reductions would also be included in the rate model.
That is correct. And the current rate model, we've run the current rate model based on the draft capital improvement plan and the draft budget for FY twenty-one. We did use the assumption of the council approved two point two five percent annual increase. It assumes that smaller projects will be cash funded and that the Western Regional project would be funded by revenue bonds. And based on those assumptions, there is no foreseeing additional above the two point two five percent rate increases over the full ten-year period.
So two point two five on the water rates themselves or the base rates or both?
It's on the water and sewer, but it's on the, it's on all of it, the base rate.
The base rate and.
The volumetric. I said that right? It's two point two five on the total rate. The current debt service in two thousand twenty-two will finalize paying off ninety thousand dollars. In two thousand twenty-nine, we'll pay off another fourteen point six million. And then the biggest one is in two thousand thirty-one at thirty point six million. So our options are to upgrade the existing system. Option two would be to construct the Western Regional system. Or option three is obviously to delay doing any improvements until we see, you know, more development. So our recommendations as a staff are to approve the moving forward with the rest of Western Regional system. Two is to update the engineer's opinion of cost. As I mentioned, the last time we did that was in two thousand seventeen, I believe, two thousand seventeen or eighteen. And then to possibly proceed to in the July, October timeframe with bidding the first phase of that, the first portion of that project out. So that'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I would personally like to see the engineer's current cost.
Number one is, I mean, number two, number one's contingent on number two. You can't just say approve it if it turns into fifty million dollars. I would expect that, but you don't know.
Current cost is.
I mean, it started at twenty, so that was a long time ago. I understand. It's just at first glance. I mean, obviously, we're gonna need it, but I just, I don't want to get in the same position we are in in the dining room. It's all loaded on our existing rate payers. I mean, I know the two point two five is built in, but you know, if you, just because you have it doesn't mean you have to spend it.
We understand.
And I mean, I'd love to see that work. But again, what we've seen in the past eight, seven, eight years is we've just been left out because of the, everybody's turned into a payment buyer and our payments are higher in town. I mean, that's what I've heard as far as why a house will sell, why everybody's building out of town. I mean, there's been some, we asked Wally a while back, we were talking about the million gallons to divert. And I asked him to go figure out how long it took us to allocate a million gallons. And it was about eight years, seven, seven years it's taken to, that we've used up a million gallons of allocation. I mean, I look at the, we're steady, we're steady, but again, we want to. I mean, I want to know the growth is going to happen. And I'm feeling more confident, but I'm not bowled over with confidence.
We, first of all, I'd like to commend Wally. I think he has done an excellent job on the presentation, on the research. The concept of moving forward, though, the opinion of, the engineer's opinion of probable cost, we don't want to expend that money unless y'all feel that you are, I mean, you use the term generally comfortable with the project moving forward. Because getting an opinion of probable cost and certainly if it's outlandish. I mean, let's say that it does grow from thirty-four million to sixty million or something. Well, the rate model doesn't cover that. So what we're asking for tonight is general consensus that you believe it's time to move the project forward. But in order to do that, we get the opinion of probable cost. We bring that back to you. And if you're comfortable, at that point, you give the final nod to move forward. None of us are in favor of moving with a blank check, assuming that it's going to cost thirty-four million and it comes in costing forty-five million or forty-eight million. What we want you to have is accurate information. But again, there's no need to spend the opinion, the money for the opinion of probable cost unless you feel that it is time for us to get to the point of moving this project forward. I will tell you, Tony Sides, who built Carolina Plantation, he performed because the city couldn't. Tony Sides is the one who has bought Cypress Creek or whatever the latest name is of that development. He will perform again. You will see two, three, four hundred houses unless the current virus takes the entire economy down, which obviously none of us, we all are experiencing the difficulties and the financial impact that that virus is causing. Once that is over, though, we feel very good about what the engineers are telling us. When you have Tooten, the Tooten developers already submitting an annexation petition for the property out on Ramsey Road. And you already have the Tony Sides property, which is inside the city. And they're spending major money to actually get things ready to bring in plants. We have to be in a position that we can match it. Because the last thing we want to do is find our position where development is occurring, but once again, it's not inside the city. I will remind you that on Carolina Plantation, one of the things that irritated many of you and definitely irritated me was a sign at the entrance of that subdivision that said, "City services without city taxes." And guess what city services we provide every day out there? Police and fire. Why? Because we have mutual aid. How much tax money do we get? None. How many houses were built there? What was the number?
Eight hundred and fifty, I think.
Yeah. And again, you know, it all comes down, we have to be ready when the opportunity presents itself.
Could you roll back to that slide with the debt?
Yes.
That's our water sewer debt at this point in time.
And obviously, I don't remember which is water and which is sewer. But obviously, the real big debt was when you built the fifty million dollar nano filtration plant and you built whatever it was, a hundred million dollars for the forest.
It was forty-seven for the, for the three million gallons.
That was the second days. So is that just sewer or is that?
That's water and sewer. And that doesn't include your rolling stock, that's just project debt.
Pardon me?
We borrow for trucks and cars.
Oh, right, right, right.
This is just.
This is just a project.
When these new, when these new houses come online, though, don't we have our systems availability? It's got the factor in there for some of this?
It does. The system development fee.
Few million, it's like two and a half, three million. If almost five hundred build out or something like that, yeah.
The system development fee would cover the roof portion of the project. So the baseline flow that we divert into that system would obviously be covered by repairs. But the roof portion of the rest of that project would be recaptured through the system development fee. So it would be paid back through the system development fee as the area developed out.
Have we ran, can't talk. Have we ran any revenue models for those areas? Potential revenues?
We have not, not to my knowledge.
If those areas were built out in that, in that zone, what sort of revenues could we potentially expect? And what sort of expenses could we expect in terms of providing police, fire, sanitation? I know that we did that.
Basically, basically, what would, if all of it was annexed, you know, or.
Remember, we ran some models years ago and we decided not to annex because it wasn't feasible for us to really do that. I'm wondering if it wouldn't be a good exercise to look at this potential build out and run a model that could potentially give us a clearer picture of what that revenue stream would look like as a build out versus what sort of. Well, Cypress Creek is in the city, so it doesn't matter, right? I mean, we're obligated there anyway.
What you can do, though, you know, every, every time we have an annexation, Mr. Massey leads a staff effort to bring to you a cost benefit analysis. So on the one that Tooten has already filed, we will be doing that. We can take the same information, though, and assume for the moment that the, that the Tony Sides property is not in the city, run the exact same model so you can see. So we can have that information, you know, Ron's not doing anything between now and Thursday.
I just think it would help give us a clearer picture of what the opportunities may look like in terms of revenue stream versus expenditures.
Are we avoiding any other expenses? I'm thinking of the main pump station. We built that, didn't we, put in a capacity for an extra pump or so to take care of increased flows and possibility other areas?
The main pump station, I believe, is built, is built out.
It is?
Yes.
We put the other pump in already?
I think, I think we started with it in already to give us the flexibility to run. Because there's, there's four pumps in there and I don't think we run all four pumps.
Like a lag lake type.
And what about the impact of the land app? Is that being calculated?
We have the permitted capacity. We're working on several efforts to handle, you know, as we've talked before, the largest challenge at land app is mother nature. Because, you know, in the city, when we have increased rainfall, higher groundwater, that's when we have the most pressure on our wastewater system because of inflow infiltration. And that's when we are able to irrigate the least out at the land application site. So we have several projects that we're currently working on to address that issue.
So in other words, if we did this project, and let's just say it was built out, what would the impact be on the land app? Would we be at eighty percent to now where we would have to look at building another plant?
No, the permitted capacity would still be below. We, you know, they base that on that eighty percent.
Right.
There would be operational challenges that we would have to deal with.
Just something to look at.
It is.
You know, what does that trigger in doing that? Would that, because ultimately, if you get to that eighty percent, you gotta start planning for a new treatment facility, which we don't have any plans for.
Correct.
Which could be substantial amount of money.
We have, one of the studies that we have ongoing currently is converting a small portion of the irrigation field to infiltration basin. We found an area that has some great potential to where we would actually eliminate irrigation of that area and install an infiltration basin. And the preliminary, the desktop model showed somewhere between two and five million gallons a day. So we would take out a small portion of the irrigation area, which we only irrigate every third day and get a base, you know, a base flow of somewhere between two and five million gallons a day. So that is something we're looking at, but we're not there yet.
One of the things that we're also, you know, comparing, we talked about diverting Bryn Mawr to the base. We found that the cost for that was just not feasible at this point. So as Wally said, looking at the existing land that we own and finding areas that have very good percolation for a much smaller expense, we may be able to pick up instead of ever diverting Bryn Mawr. Now, we're not saying we're not going to divert Bryn Mawr. What we're saying is because of the cost that that project came in, we went back and said, okay, what other options should we be looking at? And as you know, we started off with a percolation, with an analysis for a percolation basis, based on all property that we would have to buy. We looked at that and decided that's not really where we want to go. So then Wally and the staff looked at our existing land that we own, the seventy-four hundred acres, and analyzed the soil and said, is there any good soil there where we might convert? Well, the good news is we found some pretty good soil. It's not going to be free. But right now, the analysis appears to show very good capacity and a lot lower price to convert than doing the Bryn Mawr conversion. And the other thing about not converting Bryn Mawr is it does give you, even though right now, Mr. Thomas is one hundred percent right, it's costing us a lot of money, there is going to come a time when that Patriot Park and the other areas there, we're going to be able to use that million gallons. That's unfortunate that things happened the way that they did with Patriot Park. But again, you know, it's like. But again, you know, it's like, uh, a lot of investments, you gotta be ready. Are you comfortable with us doing the following? Number one, we will do the cost benefit analysis on the properties that we showed you tonight so you can see, assuming that they were not annexed, even though one of them is already in the city, we'll show you what the cost benefit analysis is. Secondly, what we will do with your permission is proceed with the, uh, with the expenditure of a new opinion of probable cost. We will then bring both of those things back. And at that point, we will ask you for the final yes or no, or whatever other direction you want to give. Are you comfortable with us doing these things?
Yes.
Yes. And what, is it possible to get copies of, of your presentations so that we could?
Absolutely. We'll, you know, Carmen does a great job of uploading these the next day and they'll be in.
Yeah, yeah, it's already, it's already there the next day.
When will we drop it? If we said go ahead with this project, when will we start increasing the rates?
Well, actually, you've already started increasing the rates.
Not, not in anticipation of this project.
This project is built into your rate structure now.
Okay.
The two point two is just like Ed Infineum at this point, right? We agree to that every year.
Every year.
We change it.
Every year.
We agreed to look at it every year.
Correct.
But we did that with the land application that before we built it, we started charging, I think, everybody five dollars.
Yeah.
And then ten dollars, actually, here fifteen.
That was, that was good.
Not without a lot of headaches, but it saved us probably twenty, I forget, millions.
But you also said it was gonna come off the bill and when it came off, it just rolled into the base. So that's, that didn't work out either.
Saved us a lot of money, right?
Well, yeah. Because a lot of people paid for something they didn't receive. Because they were paying for it for years before it came here, but that's the history of it.
It worked out good, I think.
It's a good idea to save up or try to pay ahead as much as you can.
Minimize the impact.
Yes.
I appreciate the direction you're giving. Any other comments or directions?
Good work.
Thank you.
Mayor, that concludes the item we had on the workshop. Set the rate models? We don't look at rate models?
Uh, it was built into.
That was built into.
Yes, sir.
How much cushion is there? I guess, you know, the rate model is, is predicting, uh, you know, what if, what if the opinion of cost goes from thirty-four to forty is, where, where are we at on the rate model?
We'll have to plug it back in and look. There's, there's not that much cushion, I don't think.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm curious about. How much cushion is there if you plug it in thirty-four, thirty-five million? What's, at what point does it, you know, the increase doesn't cover? It'd be interesting to know that, too.
Well, what I will say is over the period, the, the ten-year period, the two point two five, when you get to the end of the ten years, saves you quite a bit of money versus just doing increases as you need them. The total increase at the end of the ten-year period is less and the monthly bill is less.
Because you're, you're collecting money upfront to defer the interest and expense on it like we did on the land app.
Exactly.
How ambitious is your rate revenue forecast in terms of expansion, drummer calumny area and so on?
It's, um.
Does it include that?
It's fairly conservative. Two, between two and two and a half or something. We can get you, I will, we'll.
I'd like to see the extremes on that.
Yes, I could, I should have included that in the assumptions. I apologize.
I would say this, Mr. Vision, you've worked long enough with Gail Mays to know she would not let us put in any, she would not let us put in a rate model or even in a budget a number that she doesn't feel comfortable we're going to meet. Now, I just would have put Gail on the spot with that, but I'm, I'm very comfortable that the rates that she is approving to go into this, because while Wally and EJ here do a lot of the engineering part, Gail does the finance part.
I'd like to see the best case, worst case scenario.
We will be happy to get that for you.
We can do that. Anybody else?
One thing I would like to mention for the public, uh, you know, obviously, we are in a situation from a health epidemic that none of us know the actual outcome. I want to take just a minute, if I may, to talk about steps that the mayor and council have approved relative to services. First and foremost, city operations go on every day, whether it's a hurricane or whether it's a health epidemic. We have responsibilities. And at this point, we have no intentions of reducing police presence. We have no intentions of not answering nine-one-one calls. We have no intentions of letting garbage build up on the streets. Our sanitation crews have been trained on numerous occasions, long before the C nineteen virus issue, on how to handle situations that they might encounter relative to their own personal safety. Keeping your city clean is one of the best ways to keep the virus from spreading. Keeping yourself and your desk and your own house and your own car and the things that you touch are essential. One of the things that John told us the other day is he's now singing Happy Birthday twice through in order to wash his hands. Well, the city looks at it the same way. We need to keep the city as clean as possible every day of the year, and we're going to continue to do that. There will be some activities that we will be postponing or slowing down. There'll be some activities that we already have slowed down. And for example, many people want to rent some of our recreation facilities. The first thing we ask is, okay, what is the event and how many people do you expect to be there? If it passes the number that is currently being recommended by the CDC or a number that is established by the governor, we are already denying those activities. For example, we had a wedding that was planned in one of our parks. They had reserved it, but because of the governor's orders, we've now contacted that couple and given them the unfortunate news that they're either gonna have to have a smaller wedding group or they're gonna have to find a different location. The other thing is, we're not going to be closing city government to normal operations. People need us every day for paying water and sewer bills. What we are asking, though, is that if you come into city hall to pay that water or sewer bill, we ask for you to make sure that you have, you are clean from the standpoint of washing and good hygiene. We don't want to turn anyone away, but we also want to remind people, you have a walk-up window, you have a night drop box, you also have several electronic means that you can pay. At the present time, though, as you'll recall, you know, what is it, like forty percent of our accounts, is that the number generally like to come up to our walk-up service?
I think that's the number that actually pay online.
Okay.
Sixty percent pay either in person or through the mail.
At this point, we're not changing that, but we do want to let the public know that if this epidemic continues to increase and really is found to be here in Jacksonville, those are steps that we will consider through the mayor and council's approval. The other thing that we would remind people of is, at the end of the day, we each need to be part of the solution. I, I know that the governor today announced that restaurants will no longer be able to have seated service. That you can have drive-through service or you can have takeout service. We've immediately implemented the governor's actions relative to bars have to close. The city is open for business as a community. But I will say to you, in, in very positive fashion for the businesses, many businesses are self-regulating way beyond what the governor's orders are. And the other thing I want to remind the public is this, the city government cannot order somebody to close because of this virus. We simply don't have that authority. If you'll recall this past weekend, several people contacted the council members concerned that there was a fair going on at the mall and they demanded that the city close that fair. We do not have the legal authority to do that. Now, by working with the mall and by working with the agent that was going to be doing the fair, they chose on their own to close that. But what I want to remind the public is, yes, we have police powers. Those police powers only go so far. The last thing I'd like to mention on this is the declaration of a, of a state of emergency. The city has not established a state of emergency. Normally, when we talk about a state of emergency, we talk about in terms of a hurricane, where we're establishing a curfew or something like that. If the city decides to establish a state of emergency, it is for one reason. And that is to recover our expenses on enforcing the laws as established and orders by the governor. So for example, because the governor has now ordered the closure of restaurants and that crowds cannot be over a certain size, if we have to bring in police officers or other enforcement personnel on an overtime basis, if we have a state of emergency declaration from the mayor, then we can potentially recover that cost from FEMA and from the federal government. What I want to stress, though, is if we as a city, through the mayor's authority, establish such a declaration, it is about finances, folks. It is not a statement that the virus is everywhere and everybody has to stay home. The governor and the CDC will tell us those things. And I think they've done a good job. I think the president, the federal governor's done a good job of giving us guidance. But again, you will hear on the evening news tonight that cities like Greenville have established a state of emergency. You will hear that White, White.
Winterfield.
Winterfield. Thank you, High Point. That Winterfield. And who else?
High Point.
Those are activities, though, that allow the developments to recover expenses. It is not a statement of how bad the health situation is in your community. So I appreciate the opportunity just to share those thoughts. And again, we always appreciate your leadership, Mayor, you and the council members give to us as a staff and to your community. Y'all care about this community and y'all do an excellent job and we appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Can we adjourn? Go ahead. One paper? Go ahead. Not one dissenting. Oh, we got it. Thank you.